For the City of Davenport to order. At this moment, we will have a moment of silence. Let's think about, we've had a very sad anniversary here locally with the anniversary for Bridge at Torrell. And also, let's think about all the millions of people that are still displaced across our world and everything we're dealing with that they are dealing with here tonight. So let's just have a moment of silence. Thank you. Alderman Kelly, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, would you please call the roll?
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lee?
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Condon?
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Eight present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Good evening. As we begin this meeting of the City Council, I'd like to thank you all for coming down here tonight and also anyone that's watching on your computer or mobile device. We do respect your and welcome your comments and opinions. Keep in mind that when you talk to the council, you're talking to other fellow Davenporters and you're sharing with viewers throughout the region. And City Council meetings are recorded and available on the City of Davenport website for viewing. We're happy that you're participating in your city government. We ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I do thank you for joining us. And at this time, we would ask anyone in the chamber to turn off or silence your cellphones or any other electronic handheld devices because they can interfere with anyone who is speaking. And if you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you can do so during the discussion item. And you also will have an opportunity to address the City Council on items not on the agenda under the public with business portion of the meeting, which occurs toward its end. When you are addressing the council, I would ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the mayor, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We're also ask you to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And I ask, as always, that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you very much. Will an all move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for March 9, 2022?
Still moved.
A motion has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there a City Council Administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
And will an all move approval of the report on the Committee of the Hall for March 16, 2022?
Move the report?
A motion has been moved and seconded to approve the report of Committee of the Hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That report is approved. We have 16 appointments this evening, one to the Planning and Zoning Commission and one to the Civil Service Commission, as well as 14 new people either coming back or stepping up new to the Citizens Advisory Commission. So I'll read these appointments and all of the appointments, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve. The first planning and zoning appointment is Sarah Eichelberry is a new appointment. Our second appointment tonight for the Civil Service Commission is Patricia Zamora is a reappointment. And number three, the Citizens Advisory Committee, Mark Holloway is a reappointment, Adella Rasso is a reappointment, Joseph Obelton, reappointment, Austin Byrd is a reappointment, Tushar Patel is a reappointment, Tammy Lord, a reappointment, Chad Kiefer is a reappointment, Cassandra Cooper is a new appointment, Elizabeth Hodges is a reappointment, Dale Gilmore is a reappointment, Theresa Gleason, a reappointment, Carlton Wills, a new appointment, and Nancy Nolan, a reappointment, and then Regan Johnson is a reappointment. So I'll accept a motion to approve these appointments.
Move the appointments?
A motion's been moved and seconded, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I want to thank everybody who's offering to serve again one more time. And also tonight, we have two proclamations. The first is for National Work Zone Awareness Week, and Alderman Ortiz will be reading that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. All right. Whereas highway and street construction work, as well as repairs to roadways, are often completed while the roadway is open to traffic, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day. And whereas public works, law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, and other emergency personnel put themselves in harm's way on the roads each day during the performance of their duties. And whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, maintain roadways so that motorists can safely and efficiently travel. And whereas accidents can be prevented by setting aside distractions, using extra caution, reducing speeds, and giving work zones your undivided attention while motoring. And whereas the City of Davenport is dedicated to ensuring the safety of workers, motorists, passengers, bicyclists, and pedestrians while in work zones. And whereas the City of Davenport reminds motorists of the importance of obeying work zone signage and barricades, maintaining safe and smart driving habits during the construction season and at all times when operating a motor vehicle. And whereas the City of Davenport also reminds motorists that hands-on use of cellphones, as well as sending, reading, or composing electronic messages while driving, is unsafe for everyone. And that motorists should slow down and change lanes if possible when approaching an emergency, construction, or maintenance vehicle that is stationary and/or displaying flashing lights. And now therefore, we Mayor Protem, Marion McGinnis, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 11, 2021 through April 15, 2022, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in the City of Davenport, and urge all citizens to practice safe, responsible driving while traveling on roadways year-round, especially during the construction season dated this 23rd day of March, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so carried. Okay, well, I have Clay Merritt, the Assistant Public Works Director, come up and accept this.
You could say something? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz, and thank you to the council. Just as we start slowly gearing out of winter, for us, that means we're gearing into construction season. So you're going to see a lot of detours, a lot of construction going on. And so, just a reminder to kind of reiterate, please watch out for everyone, watch out for our construction workers. We all like to have new roadways at the end of a construction project, but sometimes it takes a little time to get there. So please watch out for those workers, please watch out for city crews, and for our public safety personnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Our next proclamation is for Junior Achievement Day, and Alderman Cornet will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. City of Davenport, Iowa, proclamation. Whereas the City of Davenport will observe Junior Achievement Day on April 7, 2022, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the heartland for empowering our community's youth to own their economic success. And whereas junior achievement of the heartland's educational contributions equip our youth to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Davenport. And whereas junior achievement of the heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation. And whereas it is encouraged that parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community join junior achievements efforts to ensure the future success for communities in which they live. And now therefore, we, Mayor Protem, Marion McGinnis, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 7, 2022, as Junior Achievement Day in the City of Davenport, and call upon the citizens of Davenport to support the goals of junior achievement of the heartland and encourage the continuation of strong partnerships between businesses, education, community, and our youth. Dated 23, 23rd day of March, 2022. And to accept, I move this proclamation.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And to accept this proclamation, Julie Dodson?
She's the Vice President of Community Relations for Junior Achievement.
Thank you, Mayor McGinnis, and thank you to the City-
Hi there. This is a call from GoTo.
We have a call coming in. Thank you, first of all, to not only the City Council and to the citizens and businesses, but I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but we committed to the City of Davenport for this school year to deliver both kindergarten through second grade, 100% participation in junior achievement. And we are eight classes away from doing that. And I will say, without the participation of the City Council, the businesses, the educators, we would not be able to do that. Three pillars that we, that are the foundation of junior achievement are financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship. And beyond those three, though, what we really do is we're instilling confidence within our youth. They are our future, future of Davenport, future of the Quad Cities, future people that are sitting here before us. And so, it's exciting for me to have such great participation and support of the community in Davenport, to be delivering that, to give them that confidence. So thank you so much for this. We're excited for Junior Achievement Day, to thank all of you just for instilling that confidence in our future, in our youth. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much for being with us tonight. And now we have petitions and communications from council members. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight? Okay, I guess it's just me. I do have a couple of things. First of all, there isn't any council meeting to, next week, that we are in our, I'm sorry, Alderman Kelly, I'll call you after. I'll go ahead and, you go ahead and say what you need to say, sir. Please.
I'll be brief. I'm just letting everybody know that I'm having my ward meeting tomorrow evening at Washington Elementary at 5:30. Alderman, I mean, I can't think, I know his last name. Mr. Berger will be there to answer questions for me that I have going on, that I get a lot of questions on a daily basis. So there's really be a question and answer. Anybody's more than welcome to come. I'm kind of excited. It'll be my first in-person, so.
I'm sure you'll be great, so, and I'm sure everyone's looking forward to it. Okay, so a couple of things. There is no City Council next week. It is the fifth week of the month, and we do not have City Council. So we will be back. Our next City Council meeting after tonight will be April 6, and we'll be doing the usual management updates and things in between. So just a reminder of that. And also, you know, that we've been having conversation about Third and Fourth Street conversions, and there are a series of public meetings coming up, and I wanted to go through those really briefly. And they start next week. So the first one is Wednesday, March 30, at 5:30 PM at the Putnam Museum. And of course, because we don't have council, you know, we have the ability to be there and listen as well, if council so wishes. Then Thursday, March 31, at 11 AM at the EICC Downtown Campus. We are trying to spread these out so that there are different days and times that people can, to allow more people to attend. And then the last meeting is Saturday, April 2, at 9 AM, and that's at the Rogowski Center. As the Alderman that represents this ward, I will be trying to attend as many of these meetings as I can. I've got one where I may have a conflict, but just to let you know, those are coming up, and they are on the city's website as well. So if you're interested, please plan to attend. Is there anyone else? All right. We're going to now move to individual approval of items on the discussion agenda, and we have six items tonight. The first item is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of 14 public housing properties, which is a total of 24 units, to Ecumenical Housing Development Group. Is there anyone with a public, with comment, would like to comment? Is there anyone? So will an Alderman please move the resolution? All right. And is there any discussion from Alderman? All right. Brian, please call the roll.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Resolution is adopted. So the second resolution is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of three public housing properties, which is 14 units, to Vera French Housing. Again, is there anyone, any public with comment? All right. Will an Alderman please move the resolution? And any discussion from the Alderman? All right, Brian, please call the roll on this resolution.
Jobchin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
And that resolution is also adopted. The third is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of four public housing properties, four units, to Habitat for Humanity Quad Cities. Is there any public with comment? So will an Alderman please move the resolution? And any discussion? Yes, I'm sorry. Alderman Gripp, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanted to reiterate what I said last week and maybe just add one thing to it, but when we went into the process of the city getting out of the affordable housing business, and we sold the heritage, and then we, what remained was what we're calling the scattered sites, which is what the resolutions we're approving tonight. There was a few things that the council was very adamant about, that the affordable housing stay affordable housing, that that affordable housing be decent housing. And then that the majority of the people got to stay in the housing if they wanted to stay. And I think, and we have at least 38 of the 42 resident properties, they are going to be staying there with the other four, I think going to Habitat. So all of those criteria that we were looking for had been met. And I think it's important to note, while there was a high demand and a good value for the heritage, we just knew that the market was not there in the same way for the scattered sites. And the only way that we could get this done and meet those criteria was by a group of trusted nonprofits in the community, and these are the three that are before us today. And that's how we know it's going to stay affordable housing for decades to come, and how it's going to be decent housing, and why it's the right thing to do. And I want to applaud our staff for this process. It was, I felt, a very good process and a fair process and well thought out. And same thing to my colleagues on the council. I think we gave good direction in this case. And especially, I'll recognize the co-chair of Community Development, Alderman Lee. Many of these properties were in her ward, and she took great care to visit each property and meet with the folks who were living there, and ensure that they were being treated well throughout the process. And then, of course, the three nonprofits who are taking over these properties and taking over the charge of having good affordable housing in the City of Davenport. We thank you, and I'm glad to see that all three of these are moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Lee, is there anything, I know you're on remote, is there anything you'd like to add to this tonight?
You know, I think Alderman Gripp said it very well, and I am very grateful to staff, particularly Bruce Berger. He did, I just appreciate everything they've done to help take care of the folks that are living there through all this time. It was a very difficult process, a challenge, and they were up to it, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. And I would just add, yes, this has been a very long process, and I know some of our Aldermen who are sitting here tonight didn't start with, weren't here at the beginning of the process. And the staff has done a great job. This is a very complicated, this is not just to sell an apartment building. There are many restrictions, there are many guidelines from HUD, and that is as it should be, because this is public money that these houses, these buildings were purchased with and administered with, and so I think that's important. And I also do want to thank our community partners that have reached out, and they are working in our neighborhoods now. They have been working in our neighborhoods for a long time. We know them to be landlords of quality, and that's very important as well. So I really appreciate their participation, and I look forward to their ownership of this property, of these properties. I see, one more. Alderman Cornet?
Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Berger and staff for explaining this process to me. I was not one of the ones that was here in the initial, the start of this exchange of property, but he walked me through it, and I really, it took a lot of time. But I thank him and staff for doing, helping me out with that, so.
Thank you. All right, so I think, any other discussion? If not, Brian, could you please call the roll?
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So up next, we have, and I believe Mr. Merritt is going to be talking to us about these. If not, you can tell me when I finish reading. But the first is a resolution awarding a contract for engineering services for the flood mitigation River Drive from Cary to Third Street Project to HR Green Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in amount not to exceed $335,500. Do you want to speak, Mr. Merritt, before we ask for public comment or after? After, okay. So is there any public with comment?
My name's De'ol Gilmore, living in the sixth ward. That's my understanding that by doing this project, we'll be able to keep Third and Fourth Streets open longer, whether they remain one ways or are converted to two ways. Is that correct? Just a question.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak about this matter? Mr. Merritt, if you could talk with us about this and perhaps answer Mr. Gilmore's question?
Sure. Clay Merritt, Public Works. So this particular project is one of our ARPA-funded projects, so this is storm sewer improvements to the areas of River Drive around Third and Fourth Street. That's where it's from Third to approximately Cary. To directly answer the question, yes. So this area, we typically shut down when it hits river stage 17 and a half, 18, because the river starts coming up through our storm sewer system. This would eliminate the need for that. So at that point, we would only shut this intersection down when it overtops the seawall, which is roughly around 21 and a half to 22 foot. So.
If you could state, that would be great. All right. So could I have an Alderman move the resolution, please? Okay. And any discussion from Alderman on this? Any questions? Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. Mr. Merritt, will this also affect transportation along River Drive at various flood stages as well, that normally River Drive would be shut down at a certain stage, but now it's going to remain open?
So we'll keep East River Drive, so east of Third and Fourth Street, we'll keep it open longer, because in essence, we don't have to close it because the water's not coming up from beneath the system. At some point, we will have to close it at River and Mound. We'll talk a little bit about that on your next agenda item. But yeah, at some point, we'll have to do so. So what we're probably saving, off the top of my head, probably three feet of flood stage before we probably have to shut River Drive down a little further east.
And then on top of that, how often do we typically, you know, close these intersections, close these roads? I mean, is this an annual thing where, you know, our floods, so I guess, rephrase it, out of the last 10 years, how many times have we had to shut these roadways down because of flooding?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall. I do know, so we consider a major flood, stage 18 or higher, so, and we have gotten more frequently larger floods in the last 10 years. I can look that up for you, and I can get that information, but it is certainly happening more frequently. However, it is fairly sporadic. For instance, I don't want to jinx this here, but, you know, we haven't had to do it lately. But it, you know, if you look at it from a 10, 15-year time period, it's certainly happened greater than in the last, like, 30 or so.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Okay, so Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanted to say, it is good that we spent the entire last term coming up with the flood mitigation plan with HR Green and going through it, and now we are executing Phase One flood mitigation efforts, which are almost all exclusively below ground, right? You've got to take care of the stuff below the ground first before you can do any above ground, and that all happens in Phase Two. So I think we shouldn't understate that we have started, we have started the work of this flood mitigation plan that we spent two years planning, and we are getting after it, and it will take some time to execute it. But we have a well-thought-out strategic long-term plan for how to create this system, and this is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
And if I could add, before we go perhaps to the vote, I can't speak specifically, but that, this is certainly, well, it's in Third Ward, but it's an area I drive frequently, and this is, this and Marquette probably go under first because it's not even when the river has come over the banks. This happens because of the alignment of the street to the sewer. So it's quite a bit, or my memory is, in the last 10 years, but I'm sure that you can be more scientific about it than me. Anybody else? Okay. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Cornet? Nine yeses, Your Honor.
And that resolution is adopted also. The next resolution is a resolution authorizing the submission of a raised grant application to the United States Department of Transportation for grant assistance with enhancing and improving transportation access through flood mitigation efforts and infrastructure improvements. Is there any public with comment? Will an Alderman please move this resolution? Okay, and it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from Alderman? Or would, Mr. Merritt, if you could come up and speak to us again?
Brian's going to help me out and put a little graphic on the screen. I like to use maps. So it's kind of fortuitous that, as Alderman Gripp said, that we took about two years planning process from what after happened in 2019. It's worked out really well. As you all know, this last winter, the US Congress passed an infrastructure bill, and within that infrastructure bill is quite a lot of their programs. The raised grant is one of these programs. For those of you who are interested in reading federal legislation, because it's fun, this used to be the old Bill Grant, which then used to be the old Tiger Grant. So this is an ongoing annual one. However, they've certainly beefed up the funding. I believe this next round is at $1.5 billion. This is also one of the US DOT's most competitive, you know, across the entire country, one of the most competitive grant programs. So what we are submitted, or submitting, is some of the projects that were spelled out in our Flood Mississippi Plan. So we have three goals. First goal is to keep River Drive open as long as possible, and to do that, we will do underground infrastructure improvements at River and Marquette. So to Alderman McGinnis's point, it starts flooding at about 14, 5, and that's when the city starts to having to staff it and put pumps. This will eliminate the need to do so. There's that long, ongoing cost we no longer have to deal with. However, at some point, we start shutting it down at 17, 5, and that's to start building the HESCO barriers. So at some point, we're going to have to close River Drive. Nevertheless, our second goal is to establish a permanent detour route, and this is what's talked about in our flood plan. To do that, kind of in the upper left of the screen, you'll see from River Drive to Rockingham, Rockingham all the way to Second, Second to Marquette, and then Marquette to Third- Third and Fourth. At that point, we'll hit River Drive, and we'll pick up what we talked about, you know, just moments ago. So, when we fix our underground system there, then River Drive will remain open until it overtops the seawall at that 21 and 1/2 to 22 feet. At that point, we can continue to use East River Drive until we hit River and Mound, raise locations at River and Mound. In that case, we can get all the way into the east portions of the city to Bedendorf. To do that, you kind of, we have targeted improvements along the way. So, underground improvements at Marquette, road raises in two key sections along Rockingham, improvement at Marquette, and then, let's see, then we have improvements at, let's see, at River and Mound, that's the road raise. And then the third goal is to keep interstate access open. If you recall, especially in 2019, we have HESCO barriers lining Centennial, access to Centennial Bridge, so you basically had one lane almost available. This ensures that we maintain access to Illinois, as well as to the Arsenal Bridge, with certain road raises at Second and Leclerc, oh, excuse me, at Third and Leclerc, and at Second and Gaines. So, this is what this project does. It's roughly about $18 million. It accomplishes most of what our Phase 1 and some of our early stages of Phase 2 of that flood mitigation project is. So, that behead, we have $18 million, 13 and 1/2 is what we're asking for, and about 14.5 for the city match. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if there is any.
Seeing one have any questions? Alderman Grip?
Your Honor, this is you.
Oh. Alderman Lee, we'll let you go ahead first. Okay?
Ms. Merritt, is there a possibility that we could get it all? Or will they look, if they're not going to fund the whole thing, is there a possibility of getting it in part? And what do we expect the proportion of matching to be?
So, our matching component, so the minimum standards is 20% match for the grant, so an 80% is the, is the federal grant, 20% is the local match. The more, the higher percentage of local participation, they, they look more fondly upon that. That lets you score higher. So, we've kind of jumped it up to a 25% match, so that, you have about $4.5 million. In terms of the whole flood plan, the raise grant caps off what they will provide to you at 25 million. So, our highest we could have asked for is 25. At that point, you don't necessarily get what you're looking for for our whole plan. You'll get portions, let's say, the structural components, and let's just start west of Leclerc Street, so you can build a, a few of the structural components, but then the DOT is probably gonna ask you, well, what does that get you? Because it's incomplete. So, it makes sense to stop it off at a very logical point. Also, this grant is very transportation-specific, so we tried to keep everything that we're asking for is heavily geared towards moving, moving people, moving services, moving goods. So, once again, trying to target, so that's kind of what we, when we, when we first put together the plan, is a series of projects. Some will shift in priority to what's available in the funding, and that we can kind of identify. That way, we're putting, you know, round, round peg in a round hole, instead of a round peg in a square hole.
And I applaud staff for jumping on this opportunity. Good job. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Grip?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, a few questions just about the grant. Is this a new grant? Have we applied for a raise grant before? Have we received anything? And then what is the timeline for the cycle?
So, we've, we've never received one in the past. These, they used to go by different names. They used to be funded at much lower levels as well. It's typically an annual grant with the US DOT. I remember when we first started going for them, they were called Tiger Grants, and they maybe were funded at $350, $400 million a year, and they were hyper-competitive across the, across the country. Now, with a much larger budget, about $1.5 billion, we're hoping we get some. Also, there's some stipulations in there. They like to spread those around throughout the country, so that way they're not specifically, I think there's language in the federal legislation that says they can't end up on both sides of the coast, essentially. So, they like to spread those, maybe typically in a given year, 45 out of the 50 states typically get one. We're also urban versus rural. We're in the urban category, and hopefully, some of the other urban communities in our state have gotten them. So, I think that's, that's certainly going to be one of our talking points during there, is other communities of our size or a little larger in this state have gotten some, so hopefully, we can be competitive in getting our first one.
So, this was the Tiger Grant that became the Build Grant?
Correct.
Is that right? That is now the Raise Grant. They change it every two years, apparently. So, we have applied for this before. We have not gotten it, but I know Burlington has gotten it before, and some other Iowa cities have, I remember.
Yep.
Okay. And I also remember from past submissions from us that it wasn't like, we didn't always know exactly when we would get an answer. So, do we, do we know when they'll be making this election?
Should be in the fall.
In the fall.
And I believe, according to the grant, I think we need to have funds obligated by 2028, funds expensed by 2031. The schedule we're gonna submit to them for, if we are lucky enough to get funding, is certainly a more, a faster schedule than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Ortiz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Clay, not to put you on the spot, and you can get back to me. The raised roads, at what point would the river, trying to refresh my memory on that, would the water have to hit before the raised roads wouldn't be able to be accessed?
I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor.
I don't see any, my fellow Aldermen, I did have one question myself. Now, you know, we know that much of this area, much of our riverfront is, are most impacted and poor census tracts. Does that play into, I'm sure it's factored into the application?
It does. There's criteria involved that, you know, much of these improvements are in those census tract areas. It's, it's within those federal opportunity zones. So, that's something we certainly, certainly will be putting in our application, because it's, it's true.
Now, seeing no one else, Brian, would you please call the roll?
Grip?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
And this resolution is also adopted. The next item is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023 operating budget, fiscal year 2023 capital improvement budget, and fiscal 2023, 2028 capital improvement plan. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move the resolution?
Move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
And next, there is a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda. A motion has been moved and seconded to approve these items. Brian, would you please call the roll for this?
Cornet?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Grip?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
And this resolution, this passes also. So, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions tonight? And is there any public with business? If so, please step to the podium, state your name, address, or ward, and you will have five minutes.
Bill Handel, Ward 4, Davenport, also Nashville, Tennessee, wanted to talk about a couple things that I raised last week's meeting, which was, one, the significant architecturally and historically, 1963 YMCA and its, and its site, which was originally Washington Square. This is a, just a, something I put together, just to give an idea what was most important to the site, I thought, was the barrel vault, concrete roof that it has. It's quite unusual, quite to the era that it was built. It's not just the architect in, in Davenport that designed it, it's actually, its forebear is Le Corbusier, the French architect who was the pioneer of modern movement architecture starting in 1930s, and this was an early adaptation of it. I guess, it's not going anywhere, I don't think, to preserve any part of it. I just think it's kind of regrettable that that's, that's the resolution they were wanting to see because of the storied history of the site and the merit of the building. The building wa, of the site was, of course, public space donated by Antoine Leclerc, and it was Washington Square for 125 years, and the last 60 years or so, it was the site of the Y. And the downtown partnerships plan with WXY, I guess, architect out of New York, had, as far as I could tell, no, no, I guess, consideration of that, the history of that site. So, the plan of that, of that site, what's gonna plan that is, is dollars and cents, and the invisible hand of the marketplace, whoever the Y can get for the site, whoever buys it will do what they want. Could be apartments, it could be a very nice apartment complex. I could also see, given its central location, it could be the flagship location of a Quikstar, so that, that it becomes the central service station of our downtown area. I could see it opening, and they sell, they give away a thousand dozen glazed donuts for everyone to, the, to enjoy. So, who knows? But because the, the city has decided just to let the invisible hand take its place. Couple other things, while I've got time, I'm not gonna take too much more of your time, which was the Destination Playground on the, on the riverfront. Its designer, I guess, is going to be interviewed next month by a couple of members of the Riverfront Improvement Commission and others. I've had issues with that in the past.[1697.58]